All right, the meeting will come to order. Okay, for public information, we have a copy of Nebraska Opens Meeting Act posted in the back of the meeting room, although that one has just changed and we have an updated version. Kelly has the most recent updated version up here.
That's information.
Okay, so the fact it now, and so if anyone's interested in that, that new copy's here. We do have a new one ordered, I believe, for the back room, and we'll be getting that, but it has changed slightly. All right, next item is roll call.
Harris?
Here.
Knapper?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Reisig?
Here.
Blue?
Here.
Okay, if we'd all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to mention to everyone that this meeting is being recorded. It's being recorded to be broadcast at a later date, so remember whoever wants to speak, once you've been recognized, come forward, state your name for the record, and also if you would spell your name, it assists the county clerk in putting her minutes together later. Remember, there's no swearing or any other inappropriate words or language. If we can all, I tried to turn my cellphone off a little bit ago, but if we could all check our cellphones, try and turn them off or to silent, we'd appreciate it. Also, I want to remind the commissioners also to speak clearly and loud enough directly into your microphone, so that our voices as the commissioners can also be heard on the recordings. It looks like we have a fairly long agenda, but I think some of them will go real quickly. But if we get into this an hour, hour and a half, then we'll probably take a short break. I always like to say an eight-minute break, have a short recess midway through the meeting. So I think those are the primary announcements for tonight.
We have an executive session too.
Yeah, so we'll talk about that, but there is an executive session at the end that I believe's been added.
Not to the agenda.
Okay. All right, so we'll talk about that in just a minute. So there's a, well, maybe we should talk about it now, because we're getting ready to an approval of the agenda and consider any modifications. So I was told before the meeting that we may have an executive session, and I assumed that that was on the agenda, but that's not. We need to add that to the agenda, is that right? Or is it on the agenda?
It's not a specific agenda item other than the reservation.
Your microphone's turned far away.
Yeah.
Sorry. There is not a specific agenda item.
Okay.
It would just be via the reservation clause.
The one up here where we reserve the right to enter into executive session?
Yes.
It'd just be as added as part of that.
And it would be at the request of at least Ryan with Human Resources for the purposes of just quick update and pending litigation.
Okay, all right. So we're on the item of approval of the agenda. Do we need to make that change as part of this motion then, or part of the next item?
If you're going to approve your agenda, it would be done at this time, if you're going to do any modifications to the agenda, I would assume.
We just will do it.
Just will do it.
Right, all right. So our next item is approval of the agenda and consider any modifications. So we're being requested by Lisa and/or our attorney to add a executive session item, and what would normally be at the end of the agenda would be the plan for the purpose of potential litigation.
I would move for approval of the agenda with the modification of the addition of an executive session at the end of the agenda. I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Okay, the motion's carried. We'll go to the next item, and just to remind everyone again that the board reserves the right to enter into a closed session if deemed necessary. You've already heard our discussion on this one. We don't anticipate any others at this point unless something comes up during the other agenda items this evening, so just be aware of that. All right, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. These items are anticipated to be approved by one action unless one of the commissioners would like to pull one off and consider them separately. I would ask if there's any thoughts of pulling anything off, or if the consent agenda is okay the way it is. Entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
All right, so we have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. There are second?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All right, motion's carried. All right, we'll go on to the next item, which is a public hearing. This public hearing is to discuss and consider recommendation to the Nebraska Liquor Control for Off the Water LLC liquor license. So let me officially open the public hearing. Ms. Kelly, do you have anything that you want to start with?
Their application and the folder that they provided are part of your packet, and Sheriff's here to speak to it.
All right. Sheriff, are you available to give your thoughts first? I'm gonna let you do that, and someone suggested we do that tonight.
So these things are typically investigated by two different entities. Nebraska State Patrol represents the Liquor Control Commission, and so they have the final say, but they look at you too, and so we work together with the State Patrol, and so they do their investigation, we do our investigation, and then we usually compare notes. But we have done all that. I've talked to their investigator, Woods, that did it, and we did ours, and I have no objections from the Sheriff's Department to this liquor license.
Okay, all right. Any questions from the commissioners? All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So a lot of times, we let him give that presentation at the end, but I think it might make things a little simpler as you make your presentation here tonight. So I guess if either one of you want to come forward and tell us about your application, however much you need to, we do have the packets that you presented to us. You presented quite a few items. Kelly had a lot of that information that she had prepared for us as well.
She did it.
Oh.
She did that too.
All right, so we have a lot of the information that would have been requested of you from the Liquor Control Commission, and so we all received that early on Friday, I think, or available to us on Friday, but you're welcome to come up and speak if you want to, and let us know you want us to know.
I guess I would just ask if you guys have any questions. I feel like with the sheriff's no objections and the packet, I feel like you pretty much have all the information. If there's anything you question, I don't want to keep you here longer than you really need to today.
Lindsay, the only thing I would caution you of, and we've done a lot of these, and you've covered it very well, you did a good job, just like you did the last time you were here. Your son that was here, bright young man, and I'm guessing that he's going to be working in the store.
Not when it comes to liquor and tobacco sales.
Because that would be a real issue if he was the only one there and somebody wanted to buy something that he understands.
No, he pretty much stays in our bait and tackle room and deals with all the life.
But I think he can handle everything else.
Yes.
I think you'd be fine with him, yeah. That was the only thought I had on all of it. Everything else he presented, I think, is very well documented. I personally don't have a problem with it. I think it's going to work. Everything's going well, I assume. We've got people coming there to buy things.
It's definitely getting busy.
That's wonderful, wonderful.
Any other questions or?
Anyone else have questions for while she's here? Okay, we might have some for you later, but I think that'll do it for right now.
Okay, perfect.
We did, it was a very detailed packet, and so we appreciate that.
Awesome, thank you for your time.
All right, thanks. I would say that this is a public hearing, and we want to be sure and give anyone that's here tonight on this item a chance to come and speak on this item if you want to or need to.
For or against, right?
Either way, for or against. All right, let the record show there were none. So we'll go to commissioners, if there's any thoughts from commissioners.
I had the same thought that Ken did, I spoke to last week, I guess you told me, and I basically said the same thing, you know. I don't think that you're going to put this much work to it and let anything get in the way for me. She agreed, and I think they understand the game. I'm not worried about them.
My, I would only say that the liquor licenses, for me, is always something that I look fairly closely at, but a big portion of what I want to know is what the sheriff has to say, and that's one of the reasons I asked him to come first here this evening. And we certainly want to give you all the opportunity to prove that you're going to be a really good facilitator of your liquor license, and if it's approved. And as you know, the only thing that we do when we vote on this is we're voting for recommend approval, but a liquor license comes from the state, you know that. All right, any other comments? All right, did I officially close the public hearing?
Not yet.
All right, I'll do that now.
What time do you have?
I have 4:44.
Okay.
With that, I would make the motion to approve liquor license for the Off the Water LLC as presented.
I'll second that motion.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
Got all dressed up here, all that. But you look, but you look good, that's great.
You have five yeses.
That's what these, all right, motion's carried. Thanks for being here, and.
Not quite.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the sign, yeah, so, yeah, yeah. Sure, all right, so we have that item done. We'll go on to the building and zoning portion of our agenda. We do have a public hearing, and this item is to discuss and consider approval of ACR Land LLC and Mike Hain Land and Cattle Incorporated Ag Special Use Area Request located in Section 12 Township 23 North, Range 57 West. Bill?
So this is pretty simple, they're just splitting off 4.7 acres off of a pivot corner, and there's a little confined feeding operation budding to the north, and they would like to purchase that property so they could use it for storage of feed and machinery. I think they already have stuff on there already. It meets all the, it meets all the zoning regulations, the minimum requirements, and the planning commission did recommend approval by a six to zero vote on that.
Okay, all right, very good. So this is a public hearing, and let me officially open that, and let me ask if there's anyone here this evening that would like to speak on this issue. That's both for or against. All right, seeing none, we'll let the record show that there were none. We'll officially close the public hearing portion of this at 4:47. And any questions from commissioners?
Thing I had, you said in there you had access, everything was good on.
Yes, there's any.
If you're combining, you're not separating, right?
All they're doing is splitting off that 4.7 acres, yeah, yeah. And they're just, because it's that pivot corner, so it's not really of any use to Mike and I think it's PJ.
But there's a county road on one side.
Yeah, it's County Road 10.
Move for approval.
There a second?
Aren't we still?
No.
Okay, I missed it.
I second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the application or the, is it a resolution or?
It's just a zoning, it's a.
Zoning.
Ag special use area request.
Okay, any other discussion from commissioners? All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's approved. Okay, we'll go to the next item, which again is a public hearing to discuss and consider approval of Jason and Lindsay Mosel Conditional Use Permit Request Off-Site Sign Billboard Located in Section 5 Township 22 North, Range 53 West. Bill, you want to go over that?
So they just want to put an off-site sign up down there. It's off the intersection of Stonegate Road and the County Road H, so it's on Jason and Lindsay Mosel's property, so they had to make the application on that. Here representing, it could be the owners of the store. So we had to do a conditional use permit, that's the way it is in our zoning regulations, so I have already marked it with the flags, if you look at your minutes in your packet there, that there's a 20 by 20 little envelope, it's not obstructing any view either way of the traffic, so we're good in that regard. We had to stay 20 feet off those, the primary power lines, so that pretty much pulled us where we needed to be anyway. So the planning commission did recommend approval on that by a six to zero vote also. And I can go through these real fast, the conditions of approval, we always have these for our conditional use permits. One and two, we have them on all of them, owner-operator shall conform to applicable federal, state, county, or any other local regulations. Two, when in compliance with one, then it can be transferred to owner, so if they were to sell that property, they could leave that sign on it, if the Mosels would sell that property. Three, we just wanted to throw this in here, it's just for this sign at this location for the benefit of the store, and it must be located inside the flags, the 20 by 20 envelope. And four, I threw this in there in case they were going to want to illuminate it, it was like floodlight or some sort of integral lighting, that when the store closes, the light goes off, trying to keep any unnecessary traffic from going down the road after the store's closed. And then we gave them, thought maybe six months after the store would close, essentially termination of operations, where maybe they had something come up and they had to close it for a few months or something like that, so we gave them a little bit of leeway there. But then you have six months, if nothing happens after that point, you got to get the sign removed.
Bill, if they opt to do a second sign, one like off of Stonegate, leading everybody back, do they need another special use permit to do that?
It would be a different location, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if they got permission from the owner or whatever, whatever it is, but they'd have to go through the same process, is that correct?
At this point, and maybe we should revisit that, maybe we could do, or we don't have to do a conditional use permit. This is the first one we've ever done in my 20 years.
First sign.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
It's kind of unusual, but we might be able to do this where it doesn't involve a conditional use permit, maybe another way of permitting it.
Okay.
Look at that.
Unless they know where it is, they're not going to be able to see the sign that we're just, we're just approving right now, just a thought. The conditional use permit only covers that 20-foot envelope, though, is that right?
That's the location to put it in, right, and they, it's the best spot that you can get with the 20 feet staying away from the primary power.
I was saying, it only covers the actual spot, it doesn't cover the land around it.
No, it's just in that envelope. That's actually on that map, too, I included that.
Yeah, I looked at it, yeah.
Okay, any, yeah, we've already done the public hearings, so.
You haven't taken comment with anybody yet.
Okay, so are there any other comments from anyone? I'm assuming you're, or, all right, okay. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and.
I'll move for approval.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, motion's carried.
Do you want these packets back, you guys, need them for anything?
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, thank you, thanks. Okay, the next portion of our agenda is the Board of Equalization. First of all, we'll need a motion to go into Board of Equalization.
I'll make a motion to go into the Board of Equalization.
Second?
I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second to convene as a Board of Equalization. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Plus, you're going to have to hit yours one more time.
Oh, maybe one time at least.
That works.
That does.
You have five yeses.
All right, motion's carried. So we are in the Board of Equalization. First item is discuss and consider action for one motor vehicle exemption for Capstone Child Advocacy Center in Gearing. Ms. Heather?
All right, so this vehicle is a 2020 Chevrolet Trax with a total tax loss of $193.80. Capstone provides forensic interviews and advocacy services to child abuse victims and their non-offending caregivers. They also facilitate meetings in the Panhandle as directed by, I'm assuming, Nebraska State Statute cuts off. This vehicle has been previously exempt, and I would recommend the reapproval.
What was the dollar amount, did you say?
It's $193.80.
Is there any comment on this item from anyone?
I think we do it every year.
We do.
I'll make a motion.
We have several for them.
Yeah, we do, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the motor vehicle exemption for Capstone. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Motion's carried. We'll go to the next item, which is receive tax list corrections. Are there any questions on that? I believe we have the two of them this evening that's been forwarded to us. Any questions? Comments from the audience?
Move for approval.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the tax list correction.
For both?
That's why we don't actually do it.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried. All right, next item is discuss and consider approval of a report of destroyed real property, and I believe that's the parcel number that we're looking at there, last name of Tar, is that right?
Yes.
All right.
Robert has recused himself because he has one of these 425s to be presented, so I'll be presenting them. The first one is for Tom and Lori Tar on Ore Road. They had a home fire which resulted in a total loss of their house. We are recommending that we remove the value of the home, and one outbuilding was damaged, but not 20%, so the value would stay for all their site improvements and the land. We'd go from 373-205 total value to 110-150, removing the 373-205 for the dwelling, or the 263-055 for the dwelling, and the value loss would result in $3,904 in taxes. There's pictures from both the homeowner and we went out and reviewed it.
All right, is there anyone else here this evening on this item? Seeing none, hearing none, anyone, commissioners, have any questions? This is that new form that came up a few years ago, isn't it, or is this, they were just able to start doing this? Yeah, because I think it came about when the floods hit down in the eastern part of the state, and then this form was established for people just like this, is a perfect example where it could and should be used, probably.
Does that retroact you from the day of the fire, or how, where does it start to steep?
It'll just take the home value off for the year.
The last year.
This year.
This next year.
Yes.
So everything we do anyway, tax-wise, is based upon a year anyways.
Right.
And. And so, um, well, so let me ask again.
January one, but they had their loss after, which is why this allows for it, for the assessor to change the value after that. I spend a lot of time.
So the house itself, it pretty much destroyed, but there are some outbuildings that didn't destroy.
Correct. And they don't know if they're going to rebuild, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Or comments on this? All right, if not, um, we can, I believe, entertain a motion to approve the report of destroyed real property.
I'll make a motion to approve the report on destroyed property on Tar.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve this. Um, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, motion's carried. We'll move on to the next one, which is, um, yeah, important. Few to do. Um, so this one is a, um, discuss and consider approval of report of destroyed real property. Um, and then this has the, uh, parcel number and it's, um, Mr. Simpson's, uh, Robert Simpson's property. I think it's important to note that for the record here, that this is the county assessor's property. And that's why he's not up here speaking. Uh, he's having his deputy do that, so that's good.
Sure.
All right.
So this one is for Robert in Darla Simpson on Daringa Road. They had a, it's a loafing shed and a tool shed combined. And it was flipped over by straight line winds. It's currently sitting on its roof, about a hundred feet from where it was located. And there's pictures in there that show the damage. All the exterior metal is destroyed basically, and the structure is bent. So our recommendation was just to remove that particular building from their property. And that is, uh, total of seven thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. Their value would go from three forty-six, three forty to three thirty-eight, seven fifty. Resulting in a tax loss of about a hundred and forty dollars.
All right, very good. Um, is there anyone here this evening that, um, wants to comment on this item from the audience? Quite a bit smaller than the other laws. All right. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll go to the commissioners. Any comments? So this was wind damage or, or, um, tornado type damage or something? Okay, and basically ruined that building. Okay? And the, um, the dollar amount is less than eight thousand.
Yes.
Well, I move to approve the destroyed, uh, property. Property number zero one, zero two, seven, eight, eight, three, four.
All right, so we have a, we have a motion and a second to approve the damaged real property form four twenty-five report. The Simpson property. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried. All right, thanks. So, yeah, that concludes the items under the Board of Equalization, so we need a motion to go out of Board of Equalization.
I move to lead the Board of Equalization.
Do we have a second? I'll second it. So we have a motion and a second to, uh, go out of Board of Equalization. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
President Ken?
Yeah.
You have five yeses.
All right, um, motion's carried. All right, we'll go on to the, uh, general agenda items. Um, discuss and consider the RFP for fuel, for bus barn fueling station. Jay and Kurt.
It's basically what we're gonna ask for is if we should, we should, if we should go out for an RFP or whether we ought to pay rail price for fuel. When we did the contract with Wesco last year, we paid two seventy-six five for the fuel. And this, uh, the ninth of last month, we paid two fifty-seven five because the contract was up. So we bought off the rail. And I checked today and the rail had gone up three cents from what we purchased.
So you're at two sixty now.
And that's from the same company. We can also go out and do comparables, you know, if we go off. And we'll do, have to do the same thing if we do an RFP, since it'd be over fifty thousand dollars, we have to go out for an RFP.
Do you get total last time, Bill? Who'd you get it from last time?
What? Wesco's who we, who ended up with the lowest bid.
Maybe I asked this when we were going through with Steve. You guys wouldn't bid that together at any time, would you? Or what was, there was a reason, wasn't it? As far as his fuel.
Well, ours fuel can, uh, has many, a lot of different departments in it, where his just has one, so I don't know why we've never done it. I mean, this is the first year we've done it, so.
In our tank, taking it to our tank for, yes, yes. Gas, straight truck.
Diesel they can, but not on the gasoline. That's all we're doing is providing gas.
Okay, I guess I, I don't understand the answer of why we're not bidding them all together with, at the same.
Ken, do you feel there's any reason that we would get a lower price?
I don't know. That's why I'm asking.
I don't know.
We did use about sixty-four thousand gallons.
We can't hear you.
Yeah. Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, and maybe I'm making it too simple. I, I, we're all, we're all using fuel, we're all using gas. If we bid, a bid for all the gas that's used by the county, does that, does that make sense or not?
When we order our gas, we probably only order two thousand gallons.
Tanker too.
So whoever has the seven thousand gallon tanker, whoever you get that through sometimes doesn't have straight truck.
Is there a difference in price for what you're getting it for and what, what you're looking at?
I don't know, I know, we're paying two fifty-three percent.
And what's your bid, Jay?
Two sixty. Right, better look at Sap Brothers.
Well, you're, I mean, we're.
I don't know when he bought it, but that was the price today. So the price goes up and down every day.
No, I understand, I understand.
We would probably have to work that RFP simply because we have placed, we take an entire tanker in our location, see if they'd give you the same price, knowing that they're gonna have.
Getting a smaller amount to these guys.
Guys if they give us the same price.
Yeah. Well, you're talking ten cent, ten cents a gallon difference now.
My concerns with these budgets we have, we may not hit that rock bottom price, but at least we know what we're paying and it's a lot easier to budget for. You know what you're paying for.
I'm not, I'm not, the only thing I'm asking is whether, if everybody in county is using gas, why aren't everybody giving the same price?
If we, if we order eighty-five hundred gallons, because that's what we take every time, they're gonna have to bring two trucks because we're gonna take one dump and then they're gonna have to turn around. Then they'll order their fuel at a totally different time.
It's, it comes from locally here though, right? Or does it come from somewhere else?
Nothing, locally, they all come out of Sydney.
All come out of Sydney then, okay.
Don't they?
We kinda have a, I guess maybe a special offer from Sap Brothers Fuel, so we could bid that out earlier if you remember that a little bit. So I sent out the notice and we're gonna buy off the rail at this time and they made the offer to us that if it ever comes up, up that.
Orders their price.
So no matter what, this guy's gonna hold you December, we'll never pay you two fifty-three.
And it's something we can look at, but it'd have to be a contract and we'd still have to go out for an RFP one where, yeah.
They should work to do. Refuse to accept any of them.
Are you saying that you used about sixty-four thousand gallons in your fueling station? And Steve, how much do you use?
Gas, I'm not gonna give you a number off the top of my head. Gas almost. Diesel, diesel, we're ninety thousand. Gas, it's, it's nowhere near sixty thousand.
Right. Okay, so, okay, so I think it is a good question. Could we, should we, well, could we help our prices any if we combine? Even if the rules have to be, to be able to deliver with a different type of truck for parts of it? And a different type of truck for the other part? And then giving them approximate number of gallons that we're familiar with from years past? And then the other story would be combining then a full ninety thousand gallons of diesel as well in the bid process. And hopefully in the bid process, that would help us. And, um, but yet still be able to, you order your own fuel, you order your own fuel, and we just simply, um, have, um, caused ourselves to have a better pricing structure because of the, um, amount of gallons that were promising to, basically promising to buy.
The big picture is what's gonna happen with the economy.
Right.
You know, if we, if we knew what was gonna happen, you know, if we wanted to decide to go off the rail, the price could go way down or it could go way up.
Right. And I, that's the big question right now is, um, yeah, should we be doing a RFP to lock it in? Or in the, the game of thinking that it might go down and.
If we go to war here in the next thirty days, that gas could just go sky high and if we stay out of war, it could keep coming down a little.
We do have fifty-six hundred gallons on hand right now. Did we, this process, we, we probably have to buy another tank off the rail right now.
Yeah.
Before we could get the RFP.
Can you, can you get it through Steve's price where he's got it already? Can you buy it through him? He's, he's saving you ten cents right now. I think they'll drop it wherever he wants it.
He's not locked in.
Buying off the rail.
Right.
Yeah, it's off the rail. Bit we did, representative from Sap Brothers said they'll keep their bidding price to us even if it goes higher.
What if we use more fuel than what you quote?
Um, you know, we went over it two years ago and they kept it the same price.
What you're saying, I can see.
He says he books enough fuel. This fuel, but they book enough fuel to get us covered.
And if it's technically off the rail now for both of you, it seems to me that that quantity shouldn't make a difference. I mean, if you're just buying them in truckload quantities anyway.
That's not gonna make a difference. So that's what we're trying to decide whether we go for the RFP now or we stay where we're at, where we're gonna right now.
I think the real question is, yeah, and what was brought up previously was, should we try and lock it in now? Or do we wanna just still play the market and wait till we do?
Yeah. Do you have other questions? Six month?
Okay. I know.
Put it up for RP.
I know.
I, can you get an option, just shoot it to us both ways and I'll give us the time to.
That's what we have to decide if we're gonna go out for an RFP, then we have to.
I'd like to see you do it. I'd still like to see you do it. Whether we accept it or not, I guess it's up to these guys. I would like to see what it would do if it'd make a difference. But in the meantime, I'd see if you could get that other five thousand gallons from Steve's account.
Wesco said he could do whatever length of contract, whatever length of contract we can do, six months, three months, a year.
Are you gonna try to get a quote from Sap Brothers too?
Oh, yeah, I, I'd get a, I'd get a lot of this, everybody like it did last time. Sap Brothers was higher than Wesco.
But if you can save a dime right now, you know, that's still, that's.
Right. And we could go anywhere else if we wanna get fuel now because.
And where does Sap Brothers deliver from?
Sydney.
They're out of Sydney also, okay.
Everything in Nebraska western is in Nebraska.
And that's where they have that, whatever, that fuel station there that, with the tank.
Bring it in on the rail and then blow it up.
Right. Then, so most of our stuff doesn't come out of Cheyenne then, like it from the refinery area.
Once in a while we get, we get our diesel, we can do that way if they gotta drive.
Well, my personal standpoint is, if we can combine the two different, um, entities to increase our gallons bought, which would hopefully increase our discount. Um, I think we need to work towards that, and I think that's the, what Ken's saying. I don't know that you can do it exactly this time. But I think the long-term goal has to be to try and let's work together so we can be purchasing more fuel from one supplier, which should help to bring the, the cost down, I would hope. As long as it works within you guys' logistical framework to make sure it can happen with the small trucks versus larger trucks and that kind of stuff. But if you guys can work that or work towards that, we certainly would encourage it. And I think from what I'm understanding from these guys, that we'd be interested in going out for RFPs and I'm, I like the idea of asking for a price for six months and a price for twelve months.
See if there's any variation.
Both, all right.
It'd just be how we wrote our, our P, that's how we.
Right. That sounds good to me. I like that. Does anyone, uh, any other thoughts on that?
I agree with what, everything you said. I think those are the points we need to hit on.
Right, and I don't know if we can get this whole thing done to work together, but due to the fact that you're both buying off the rail now, you're not locked into contracts right now. Seems to me that maybe now's a good time to do it, so.
You know, adding ten thousand gallons or fifteen thousand, whatever Steve uses is not gonna, it may make some difference, you know?
On the gasoline, but I'm hoping that with that, if we, if you could combine into that, the, the diesel as well, at some point, then when you're looking at those gallons plus the gasoline gallons, you're talking quite a bit. So, anyway, just a thought, if you can work on that. And say it at the very least that we're recommending for him to go out for RFPs for six month and twelve month.
I would, yeah, then check with everyone.
Okay.
Yeah, I need a motion because it says consider.
That's a good question.
Discuss and consider, so I would assume you would.
I'm prepared for you to vote.
Okay. So I would move that we ask staff to, um, send out for requests for proposals for fuel, um, with a six month option and a twelve month option. And if they can combine the two, um, organizations in adding to increase the gallons, that would be great.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second.
You're the motion?
I was the motion. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
He doesn't want, I'm pushing, pushing, pushing.
You have five yeses.
All right, motion's carried. Okay, next item is, um, discuss and consider fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, NDOT fifty-three eleven program agreement. Kurt?
Okay, so back in March, um, you approved authorizing me to apply for funds. Per our discussions over the last few weeks, with the lack of federal funds right now, this agreement is actually only for fiscal year twenty-six. And based on what NDOT is telling me, this is what they know they can give me, they're hoping. They're hoping once everything is done with this current fiscal year, we will do a supplemental agreement to this to make up that difference of the six hundred and twenty thousand I had to cut. So basically what I'm doing is I'm asking you, this, this document, the contract, the agreement has all these spots for me to fill in my information, the date is approved. The next item is a resolution authorizing me to sign this at, with your permission. But it's just basically, I wanted you to look it over if you had any specific questions. Kind of a formality since we've already applied for the funds to approve this agreement, knowing it's probably only for part of the fiscal year. Hopefully, like I said, we'll get most or all that other money later. Today it has a supplemental agreement, they call it. And then uh, so I'm looking for an approval on this. And then we'll move on to the next one that would allow me to sign it for you.
How much are you looking to be short on this?
Six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Six hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Were we supposed to make that up if it doesn't?
We're not. Um, it's going to be a matter of reducing services or reducing staff. But to get to the number they needed me to be at, I cut everything I could, plus three months of wages and benefits for everybody. So it's going to be, hopefully we'll know sooner than later, but if, if not, then we've got some serious discussions to have.
Who's making the decisions on it, Kurt?
This is also, they had eleven point five million dollars in federal money for next fiscal year. Requests from all the other agencies totaled eighteen point six million. Given their limited staff and the timeframe, they didn't have time to go through everybody's individual requests. Everybody took a thirty percent cut across the board and they said, here's where you got to get, get there however you have to get there. And I took everything I could out without having to touch wages and benefits. And that's what they told me I needed to do to get to that number so they could get an agreement in place. Because without the agreement in place, we, we don't get any reimbursement starting July one. So we have to have this agreement in place to start submitting invoices for next fiscal year. And then like I said, they're, they'll finish up auditing, they do a desk audit and then a second desk audit on everybody's invoice. We just got, uh, March is paid, April is submitted, and that's as far as we're going to get this fiscal year. We won't get reimbursed for um, May or June until next fiscal year. And that's just, it's a two-month lag by the time they get all the, the desk reviews done.
When you say they, who are they?
NDOT, they have two.
The NDOT, there's not a subcommittee or anything off of it.
They have a, they have one gal, Linda, she does our primary, she looks at all of our receipts, all of our documentation. She has any questions, she sends them back to me if she's missing anything. June wires is the other gal, then she looks over what Linda has submitted. If it looks good, she signs off, approves the payment. And then the controller, uh, ACHs us the payment usually within about a week.
Did I hear you right that they were short-staffed, didn't get a chance to look at everybody's budgets, so everybody just took a thirty percent cut?
That's pretty much how they had to do it because I went to them and said, we're at twenty percent growth year over year. And they said, right now, we just need to get agreements in place. We get the, when we know how much additional money we have, they're hoping to be able to look at it on a case-by-case basis. And that's what I pushed for is that we're growing. Do these other entities that ask for more money, where are they at? And if you're going to be truly fair, that's the way we're, I feel it should be done.
Sure. My question to you, I don't think I got my answer right. What's our worst case, what's the worst hit we could take if they don't reimburse us here?
We shut down for three months.
I know, how many dollars are we looking at coming up with here? We still got, somebody's going to have to pay some bills.
Well, you, you're, you're going to be getting enough for what, nine months?
Nine months.
You said through the school year, is that what you, did I hear you say that?
It would get us to, well, it would get us through March. It'll be like an April, May and June.
So we're getting that many dollars.
They're hoping.
If we come up three months short, that's a lot of.
Yeah, but by that time we're going to know and by that.
I have to have my um, my June invoice has to be submitted no later than August fifteenth. They are planning on getting, by then, having everybody within a month to two have everybody's approved. So then they have time to see what kind of carryover they have. They, they think they're going to have some carryover federal dollars, they just don't know how much. I pushed through some things that were in my next year's budget this year, so I made sure I got those taken care of. Because I did have extra federal funds still sitting there, I didn't use it all, so. We have the buses coming in, I, I purchased the radios, the, the uh, camera systems and the bike racks for those this fiscal year.
Is there something that we can, as a board, can do to assist you in getting this? Right now, it looks like you're fighting the battle by yourself.
It'd be federal dollars, so um, that's where the, that's where the money needs to come from. State, Nebraska's one of the lowest in the nation per capita in what they put into public transit. And you've seen the budget negotiations there, they don't have it either, so um, I couldn't, they gave us several examples of where the, some of the, the shortages came in. But I think a lot of it's just due to the growth of public transit across the state. They did have some people that just didn't calculate their budgets very well. But being one of the largest um, in the state rural transit agencies, we were, I was good, we were good. We didn't blow their numbers out of the water, we've done well the last two years, so. I think part of it is, they had to add a lot of overhead down there when they had an audit. They had a significant number of findings and they had to add a lot of staff to make sure they were getting back in compliance. And that included going out with some contractors to help with drug and alcohol program reviews. They've got some outside consultants helping them with some other stuff that's, that's dipping into some of that money. I don't know where all the money is going, but I know that's part of it.
So we have a significant growth in public transit, so now that's time to cut it. That makes a lot of sense. That really does make a lot of sense. I just.
And there's, there's a couple, uh, Hooker County just shut theirs down, so um, I don't know if that was simply financial, uh, or not, but.
So I, I agree with Ken that if there's something that we can do as far as a letter, that type of thing, but surely the state would be telling you if there's some things that you can do, um, or I say you slash us um, by writing letters to people or um, I guess let us know that. It seems to me that um, we're going to be cautiously optimistic that some of this will get ironed out, if not all of it. And we get funded for the balance of the year, which are we talking three months then or?
Yeah.
About three months worth?
I cut, like I said, I, we, I had planned to expand our demand response hours to match our routes, which is instead of seven to four, it would be six thirty and six thirty as well. That was, that's not really a significant amount if it's um, one or two drivers' hours for that extended period, a little more fuel. Uh, not a significant expense to do that. I cut all that out, we had some other technology we were looking at adding, we've cut that out. Just a lot of things, I'm, I'm actually working on getting an RFP in place to start doing some, selling some advertising on the vehicles. Whether it be on a monitor onboard that scrolls through or actual things on the bus, on the, decals on the outside of the buses. But it's, it's, it's a pretty detailed RFP, um, so I'm working with, uh, done some initial talks with Olson, who's still under contract with the state to assist with those types of things.
I see.
And that, just to drive revenue on our end, that still doesn't replace that federal money.
If we can help with anything, you'll let us know, I'm sure.
And it, it's probably going to be um, reaching out to your senators and congressmen on a federal level.
Right.
So.
And if we need to do that, we can sure try.
But that's, like I said, this is getting us in place, so when we, we get to July, I can start submitting invoices and start getting reimbursed until we know more, um, so.
So you have this down as two separate um, agenda items?
Yeah.
First to approve the resolution and then the second item would be to approve you to be able to sign.
Yeah, first one is just to approve the agreement. The second one is approve the resolution that authorizes me to sign all.
I would move for approval of the agreement.
Second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
If they pay in the rear, so will we get paid up to the third or the uh, ninth month? Are we going to get paid to the seventh?
Yeah, it's, it's, as long as I don't go over what they put in this agreement, we'll get it all back. So I, I've got to watch my budget really tight.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, so the motion's carried to um, approve the program agreement. And then the next one, uh, Steve, have you, I guess you've kind of already explained it, I mean.
The other one.
Yeah, Steve was the other.
Kurt, or Steve, you can come back up and explain it if you want to.
Yeah. So this one uh, is a resolution that gives you the authority to sign the document, right?
Correct. I'd move for approval.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution to allow Kurt to sign it. Any other discussion?
Oh, she broke it. While she's working on it, there, in that package, there was also, you saw this conflict of interest disclosure form, I do plan on filling that out. At this point, I have no conflicts of interest from anyone I know personally or otherwise as far as buying stuff, um, purchasing things. And in the future, if that were to ever come about, probably be done by doing a, an RFP process to eliminate any, any hint of impropriety there, uh, whether it be bus maintenance or, or anything like that, so.
So we had a motion and a second, I believe.
And I'm ready.
We've already loaded. Except for you.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried.
I couldn't find the word resolution.
We'll keep going if that's all right.
Bring it to me.
That's the one I signed, that's what this authorized me to sign that. I think it, you know, maybe the wall down, down here is just. State didn't give me really clear instructions, surprised.
You talked to Troy. Thank you.
Okay, um, I think we can continue and go to the next item. Discuss and consider action for signature on state grant award for Scottsbluff County diversion and family support. Tamara, uh, program director of Scottsbluff County diversion, family support and new city council member. Congratulations.
Thank you. The last year we were awarded a hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. This year I requested just over um, a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars for the diversion program and family support. We were awarded ninety-two thousand, one hundred and fifteen thousand. Um, a couple of things affected that, one is I did not hire the third person in our office. I didn't feel like we needed it, but they did leave room if I need to hire a part-time person for our office. The other one was um, we were subcontract for Panhandle Partnership. Panhandle Partnership serves eleven counties in the Panhandle. Um, the crime commission came back and said that if we don't sever ties with Panhandle Partnership, that Scottsbluff County would be put on low-high risk and close to monitoring. We're right now at low risk with no problems in our grant. I wasn't willing to do that, so I did cut Panhandle Partnership um, from the grant, saving about fourteen thousand dollars. Panhandle Partnership, like I said, serves eleven counties in the state of Nebraska. We did not get our community plan back from Panhandle Partnership for three months after the deadline. So that affected our numbers, that affected what I could tell the crime commission we needed. It's been an ongoing battle, but I will say during that um, because we cut Panhandle Partnership, those eleven counties are now without any money. We, Scottsbluff County paid the bill for those eleven counties to serve as a subcontractor. So now we have no one to do our command, community grant. Those grant, those community plans, I mean, are good for five years. But in those five years, we have to have those statistics, that data and everything. So because I cut them, that affects all the eleven counties, including Scottsbluff. And I will also have to create our own community team plan here in Scottsbluff, which will only serve Scottsbluff if I do it. Dawes County panicked, they tried to get their own community plan together. It affected Garden and Cheyenne, they had money cut as well from uh, their grant because the community plan wasn't done. And I'm not willing to do that for Scottsbluff County. So in order to create a team plan, I will need to have a county attorney, a judge, someone from the school, myself and one other layperson to create that team. Which I'm willing to do that. So that's where our numbers come from, it was a cut of thirty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Did the state give any indication why we had to sever the relationship with Panhandle?
Because they weren't doing what we contracted them to do. And I just came last week, I came from diversion meetings and all of that was discussed at our conference in Lincoln this last week. There's going to be, we have a whole new diversion program model that I'm going to have to make changes to the program. And we'll make that happen as well.
Tamara, how much are you going to have to increase your budget to offset this loss?
None.
You're going to be okay.
I'm going to be okay.
That's what I was hoping to hear.
Because the, the actual cut is to the other counties, basically.
Right, yeah.
It's our funds and our program should um, act as it did last year.
Correct. I have, I've been very fiscally responsible with our funds that we have received. In fact, I will be turning some funds back. But I do workbooks for the kids, we've gotten away from community service some because the crime commission doesn't like to see the community service as much. Um, we have online classes, I do um, mediation, I do tutoring. I do um, counseling through um, all of our programming. And so my wages are paid through the county, which they've always been, but my family support worker, hers are paid through the grant. And so I try to be really respectful in what I get as far as incentives and um, operating costs through the grant so that the county doesn't have to um, put up that money. Now the county does pay my office space, my phone and my wages and those kind of things.
I would move for approval of signature on the state grant award.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the um, grant award. Any other discussion? Seeing none or hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried, thanks. Okay, we'll move to the next item, discuss and consider capital improvement grant for Nebraska State Historical Society Foundation Walk to the Rock. Fifteen thousand, five hundred. $15,500. Brenda?
The Nebraska State Historical Society Foundation is requesting $15,500 to make improvements to the Walk to the Rock. So not Chimney Rock itself, just the whole walking path.
Chimney Rock?
It's two different foundations.
I'm just saying, where is this?
Yeah, it's at Chimney Rock.
That's what I want, the location.
And so the improvements would be for motion and security cameras, so to enhance lighting and surveillance. Bench seating, there's no seating at all out there. And requested especially from older people, and then when it's hot, that there is some seating out there. And then also, they want to provide a storytelling experience. So it would be signs with QR codes on them, and you could scan the code while you're walking and listen to different stories about history, geology, wildlife, and Native American heritage. Last year alone, the trail welcomed over 15,000 people, and $468,000 in donations have been used for maintenance and education. But because of the influx of visitors, the improvements need to be made to ensure safe, comfortable spot for people to go to for educational experiences. And the Walk to the Rock encourages longer stays. So people used to stay at Chimney Rock about a half an hour, so it's extending their stay at least another 34 minutes, so a much longer experience. We're keeping them in the area longer. And it also increases tourism dollars spent in Scottsbluff County on hotels, meals, and transportation. There is a match for this grant on their part, so the $15,500 from them would come from additional security improvements, additional signage, other enhancements with the audio that were not written into our portion of the grant. And then, of course, there's always a little bit set aside for unforeseen expenses. So as long as they provide half, then we can give them whatever, but we're predicting it'll be about $15,500. Anything you'd like to add, Mr. Harris?
I would only, well, let me first of all say that I missed the last tourism meeting this past week for whatever reason. I don't have a reason. I didn't have it in my calendar. But I was part of the meeting when this was originally talked about, and there were two people from the State Historical Society Foundation that gave us a presentation. One of the things that I found interesting was that, again, these are two separate organizations. One's the Nebraska State Historical Society, and then the foundation is different. The other thing that I heard was that if you go out to the Chimney Rock Visitor Center, it costs you money to go in, and it's fairly expensive, I thought. But to walk the path, it doesn't cost anything. That's free. And so, and it's, again, ran by the foundation, done by the foundation. We've given money there before, and they ask for considerably more than this. And some of the things they were asking for didn't fit our tourism dollar format. And so some of the items were turned down because of that reason, and then just simply didn't feel we could give them the full amount they were requesting. And then again, this is a matching grant so that they have to put some of their money in. So just be aware of that. I'm okay with doing it. I do believe any, most visitors that visit the Chimney Rock area, which, again, it's about, Chimney Rock itself is about two miles outside of our county, so it's barely outside of that. But as I told the Tourism Committee, I spent some time in my growing up years in Baird, so I have a little bit of an attachment to Chimney Rock. And the, so I certainly didn't have a problem with it. I do think it would encourage people to use that walkway more, and it's being used more and more and more every month and every year. But, yeah, it's 15,500. And again, being brought to us because it goes over that $10,000 limit that the committee can approve on their own, and they certainly are recommending, the committee is recommending.
Yes, and it's all capital improvement funds, so it's all tourism money, so all watching tax collected.
Out of the capital improvement part of it.
Yep, out of the capital improvement.
And that's where you have most of your funds right now, I take it.
Yes.
Question, does Morrell County put anything into this at all? Do they do anything for Chimney Rock?
You know, I'm sure that they do, but it's not even close to this magnitude. You know, they only have two plus hotels, but they're not collecting that much. And they are still working really hard on Courthouse in Jail Rock project out there. So that's where most of their money is going to. It's just taking them a little longer to...
Is it normal for us to invest out of our county where these taxpayers are putting the money in this county? I mean, these people that are, you know, that manage and maintain these motels in this county, how do they feel about spending money out of the county?
Well, there's two of them on the board, and they voted for the project, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely. And I think the other, the biggest thing to mention here is that most people that go to Chimney Rock are either coming from Scottsbluff National Monument and were sent there, so they're coming from our county, or Chimney Rock is going to send them to Scottsbluff National Monument, so they're, they would come here. So we've done one project with Chimney Rock itself, and that was $15,000 when they built the new visitor center, and that's been years ago now. And then we did help a little bit with the moving ground to build the trail for the first phase of this project.
You answered my question.
I do have a fun fact.
Let's hear it.
I do. So do you know that there's more bighorn sheep sightings at Chimney Rock than rattlesnakes? So that's more reasons to go hike.
Well, once you get the sidewalk in, that'll change.
I know, right? Yeah. I think it's a little bit overgrown, but that's part of their improvements as well.
I would move for approval of the capital improvement grant.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried. All right, we'll go to the next item to discuss and consider bylaw change regarding vacancies.
So the first part is the proposed, and all we did was add one sentence. And when I say "we," I was assisted by Jason Ocean to help me, and he changed one little word, so I did pretty good.
Hope he didn't charge us for that.
Well, I don't know. I don't, I don't know. I have nothing to do with that. I just ran it past him first because he has a lot of experience with this, working with the hospital, so he knew exactly what he wanted me to say, so I had to be sure I was doing it right. So basically, the highlighted part there, I don't know if it's not highlighted on your part, during, in this second paragraph here, yes, that last sentence was added. So it says, "If the Scottsbluff County Commissioners deny the recommendation from the Tourism Committee, other interviewed applicants may be considered before seeking a new panel of candidates for consideration." So that's exactly what we wanted it to say.
Any other thoughts or questions from anyone?
Why move that we approve the bylaw changes regarding vacancies?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have five yeses.
Motion's carried. Thanks, Brenda. All right. Going to the next item is Discuss and Consider Designation of Printer Services for Joint Public Hearing Postcards. Kelly?
It wasn't a good time to take a recess, I think.
Oh, no, right, right after this item.
Okay. So in working with NACO, we're going through MIPS to get the statewide bulk or the pink postcard orders, and just seeing if you would go along with that recommendation.
That's what we've done in the past, right?
Yes.
That's what Robert does, isn't it?
You're talking off the mic, Robert.
Yeah. Thanks, Kelly. Well, I'm forgetting, huh?
Yes, I mean, from my standpoint, this is the way to go because we sent out our notice of evaluation changes, and they actually printed the notice, included a cover letter, folded it, stuffed it, mailed it, and they got bulk posted, and it cost us 59.3 cents per item.
For a letter?
For a letter.
For a letter.
So it's gonna be cheaper.
Well, it's a win-win deal.
It is.
Make a motion and proceed with that.
Second?
I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second. Let me ask one question, then. Ultimately, you're responsible to make sure that those happen, but those people, those entities that were responsible to have a pink postcard, if there is one, they're the ones that actually have to pay for it.
They pay for their portion.
Right, they pay for their portion.
Everyone pays for their portion of the pink postcard.
And that's why you're going through this right now.
We have to get it. We have to get the Scottsbluff County Board's approval for what, or for you to pick a print shop.
Very good.
And we want to use MIPS.
Right. And... All right, so we have a motion and a second to use MIPS for the pink postcard and as the printer those cards. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, motion's carried. We are gonna take a short break. Eight minutes is what I'm saying, so try and be back here at 6:01. 6:01? Reading? Okay. There you go. All right, so we'll come back to order. Next item is Discuss and Consider a Resolution for Budget Enhancement for the Following Budgets. The Management Accountant, County Attorney, County Extension, and County Surveyor. Lisa?
Okay. Well, we usually have some adjustments that have to be made every year, and we do set aside $200,000 in the Administrative General Fund to accommodate this. And I guess I wanted to bring to your attention, last year, we had to make adjustments of $130,000 to county court, $110,000 of it, and $20,000 to the sheriff's budget. This year, we're under $20,000 total. I think we budgeted pretty well.
Really good.
So, starting off, I bring up my own budget first. $1,000. I mean, just, and the biggest source of my $1,000 is we made a change to Health Savings Account contributions in January. And, you know, I had my budget to the penny for that, and it was, it's an extra $600 out of my budget just for that. Another line I'm struggling with or that I discovered I'm struggling with is advertising expenses for positions. Now, four years prior to, we would advertise in the Star Herald, we'd spend anywhere from $7,000 to $15,000 to advertise job vacancies. Now, we don't, the only thing we advertise is attorney positions, and we advertise in, at the law colleges in Wyoming and Nebraska, and like, what do you call it, the bar association in either Nebraska or Wyoming. Very legitimate places to advertise. I had knocked my advertising budget down to $1,300, and we spent at least $2,300 right there. So, and we are still at an attorney deficit, so I think that's legitimate concerns. And I also had, anyway, that's the majority of where my budget concerns were.
Would we, wouldn't that supposedly come out of the budget of who you're applying for that job? We're buying fuel for road and bridge. We'd take that out of road and bridge.
You would.
Why wouldn't we pull that out of that?
Human resource, we could, and it's my understanding, if I would put in, how it's been done in the past. Like you, like I said, most jobs we put on Indeed or any source that doesn't cost us at this point. But if we would advertise for a position in the Star Herald, and then like the department director says, "I want you to run it again," it would be on their expense. It's just, do we put it there, or do we put it as part of human resource personnel?
I think we should take that account down, you know, instead of having, you know, take it out of your account, and then they're short, or they're long on their budget.
I think we could in the future, but it's just a matter of where's the best place? This is just how we have handled it in the past. And Kelly's not, yeah, Kelly does not anticipating an opening if she would need to advertise, that like Dave is going to need to advertise for attorneys, and do you split it between attorney and public defender? I don't know. What's the best answer? Right now, this is how we've done it.
There was a time where each department paid their own advertising, but they would go through, they would go through the office.
But we are, we are, we are the county of Scottsbluff. You're gonna give somebody the money, why not somebody that understands the pricing?
Yeah, and we initiate that on their behalf, so, and we have a little more control that way, how much we're gonna spend. So I see a lot of gains to keep it there. So, anyway, that's my budget. The next one that needed a little more money, county attorney budget. And I put in my explanation to all of you that Dave did hire a new physician in his office for an investigator slash paralegal kind of position. And this person is actually becoming quite an asset because it also, maybe Troy and Mark can explain this to me. They, he also can serve in some capacity, he's a former police officer, so he can serve in capacities that would assist them as well. True? Okay. And the other thing, David, let him, you can walk up here if you want. The other thing Dave is really challenged with that change this year is we no longer have a county doctor that can do autopsies. So we are, whenever autopsy is needed, we have to pay $400 at least each way to transport a body to Omaha. You know, can't even go to North Platte. We gotta go to Omaha, have the procedure done, bring him back. So that's a lot of extra expense.
So the county attorney's office hired James Jackson, who was a Gearing sergeant, a longtime Gearing police officer. And so he retired from Gearing and got offered a job from the county attorney's office to work as an investigator. And so we, I mean, James is really well-known to everybody in law enforcement around here. And he's, I mean, he's, there was no, no issues with him at Gearing, and he just wanted a slower pace and not to have to go out on some calls that he was having. He's just tired of doing it. Since he's getting older. Took a pretty significant pay cut to go to work for the county attorney's office, but he did. And so since then, we have actually, so he could keep his, his law enforcement training and credentials were completely up to speed. And so we actually deputized him. We talked a lot about it, attorney, including in the state and everybody else. There's other places that do that to him. So he's actually been deputized by us, but we don't pay him. And he's not in our union. County attorney's office pays him. He's not even on our pay scale, but he is deputized by us. And he's, he's been just great. I mean, even a lot of what he does, he needs... And he's, he's been just great, I mean, even, a lot of what he does, he needs help and bounce things off of people, but he's, he's a really good experienced officer. He's a former wing agent, he was a sergeant, a supervisor over there, just a really good cop. And so, and so that's been a boon to us and so we've been very glad to have him around.
Great.
Pammy wants to say something as well.
So at the end of Dave's term, we will be losing our investigator, Vicky Marino, she will be retiring, so we are getting James up to speed to take Vicky's place. However, that's a year and a half out.
Any questions thus far? All right, ten thousand dollars there. The other one, county surveyor came to me with a concern he had as he presented an invoice that he had been sent on some work with the state of Nebraska, that he said state of Nebraska was going to be reimbursing him.
Can you say it again?
State of Nebraska had him go do some survey work and he went as the county surveyor and the county is reimbursed, being reimbursed by the state of Nebraska for that and I'm thinking that was just under two thousand dollars, I'm sorry, I did not come with an exact number. But as county financials go, the expenses show up and revenue is gonna be a whole nother thing, you can't bring that, you can't detract that from his expenses. So it's gonna help throw, it's gonna throw him over.
Will it be a two thousand dollars off this thirty-five hundred he's asking for or is it gonna be on top of the two?
It's, I mean, it's included in the thirty-five hundred, because, I mean, you count for the expenses even though you're being reimbursed.
Sure.
So, that, and I believe he had some services he provided that he required another thousand dollars to meet. And the last one was county extension, she, Jackie Guzman, came to me and just said, I knew I was gonna have some problems with transportation and travel of my extension agents going, because she also, they provide, the university provides the automobile, but I believe that threw her over the budget that she had and we have, we not only have two employees out there that are our county employees, we have one of the extension agents that still is a University of Nebraska employee, but we reimburse the university for that person. And that was, she's needing another two thousand dollars. And I kinda made everything very bare bones, didn't give any extra than what the person, what the account needed, so.
That allows these accounts to be able to close out in the black.
That's, that is the plan.
The plan, that's a good plan.
Hoping I didn't short them, but yeah, I believe that's all we're gonna need for each one of them and like I said, it's roughly sixteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Any other thoughts or comments?
Are there any accounts coming in long enough to pick up some of that at all?
Oh, sure. Yeah, that came in short, so.
More good news.
Yeah, yeah.
I would move for approval to sixteen five.
I do have a resol, the resolution and Kelly will have you sign that, so.
So we have a motion to approve the resolution in the amount of sixteen thousand five hundred, according to this breakdown. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, motion's carried. Go to the next item, which is discuss and consider nine-one-one advisory committee budget for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Lisa?
Okay, I'm serving currently as the representative on the nine-one-one advisory committee bud, advisory committee. And we're working through the budget process. We presented information, which when I say we, it's Linda and Troy and I all worked on this. We paired together what we were paying for out of the county budget and compared to what is being billed to the advisory committee, committee and came up with some very specific expenses that we expect would be shared by members of the advisory committee. And I present that to you here because county still has a part of this. And as it ends up, we're sitting at six hundred forty-one thousand dollars in expenses that would be shared through the advisory committee. There's another eighty-two thousand, that's another situation that I can tell you about, but. But how the advisory committee is comprised is that we have a percentage allocation of what each entity is expected to pay per their, per their population. So Scotts Bluff has the largest population, they have forty percent of the expense. Two hundred sixty thousand dollars, then gearing a hundred forty-seven thousand, county at a hundred forty thousand. We have traditionally, since I've been here, taken this out of Keno funds, as we feel like this is serving the community. And then you can see where everybody else stands. What we did build into this budget that we wanted to bring to your attention was a hundred thousand dollars, which we will keep in there, kind of a sinking fund because I believe when comm center budget was presented to you, to you last year, they brought up the fact that the computers that we have are gonna be sunsetting by twenty twenty-nine and they would cost significant amount of money to replace them in the very near future. We're going, we presented that as a concern of the advisory committee, they can help us pay for these computers, because I'm thinking it was four hundred fifty to five hundred thousand to do this. I gotta nod. I feel like that's a win for us, we, we need the help. Anyway, and the eighty-two thousand six ninety-one that I had there statewide radio project lease, I also have it down below. When we brought forward the Motorola lease in twenty twenty-two, most every entity was able to pay for their radios in full right then and get rid of that six point eight million dollar lease. Except for Morrell, Wyman, and Mitchell. And the lease is still in the name of Scotts Bluff County and for the next seven years, they will continue to pay into county and we will make sure that Motorola lease payment is made every year. I use the twenty-nine ten to bring the money in and pay it out. But that is solely a responsibility of Morrell, Wyman, and Mitchell.
Lisa, does, is it Dawes County where Alliance is at?
They're in Boxview.
Boxview, do they pay into this as well?
We no longer serve Boxview County.
We don't do them anymore?
Nope. January, February, no, they went back in their city and county or sharing that, right? Okay, there's, shaking there.
I got by me some, I guess.
Any questions for us? Because we did have some expenses that we saw that county budget was paying that we felt it should be shared by the advisory committee, such as a tower in Scotts Bluff owned by Action Communications, thirty thousand dollars a year. It's not just us using that tower, it's, it's a countywide tower for other agencies to use as well. We put it here and not on the county budget, the county property tax dollar budget. That was one thing and, were there others?
Um, the Lumen, so the nine-one-one.
You're talking off the mic?
Yep.
Century Lincoln Lumen, up at the top. That pays for the nine-one-one system and so a percentage of that. Or, so that was all being paid by the county through taxpayer dollars and since it is part of nine-one-one system that's used by all of the different agencies, we've moved it over into this account.
She freed up thirty.
Yes, and then some of the maintenance agreement, not all of it, was in this account. And I, I don't know why it was coming out of other accounts, but, so we just moved all the maintenance agreements for the CAD software into this account as well. This will go in front of the, like, it's been presented to the advisory committee, they were to take it back to their councils. It was presented by May fifteenth for the inter-local agreement and we will be finalizing tomorrow at the nine-one-one advisory committee meeting.
So this, again, is primarily paid by all of the entities listed at the bottom. Okay? And then?
It's shared by all of them, yes.
All right. And then we'll be getting payments made to us from Morrell, Wyman, and Mitchell.
For their radio lease payment. We already have for this year, we will again in May and June next year, that's when the lease payment is due.
Right.
Yes.
All right. All right, any other questions or comments from anyone?
Why move that we approve the nine-one-one advisory committee budget?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to approve the advisory committee twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have five yeses.
All right, motion's carried. Okay, we'll go to the next item, discuss and consider completion of communications center oversight by the Scotts Bluff County Sheriff's Department effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Lisa?
I think that speaks for itself, what we are asking for, this was discussed in January and February, that this would, Cindy is considered our director now and that Troy was there to assist her for the first few months and we are done.
Okay.
Unless there is concern somehow brought forward.
Okay. Troy, did you have something? I'd seen you walking this way.
Yeah, so since, since we hired Linda as our director, she's taken on more and more of the role of director and she's got a good staff underneath her. I'm totally confident that she's at a spot now that she can continue with the leadership of the communications center. We'll still be there to help her if she needs help, but we don't need to be as hands-on oversight.
With that, Troy, I wanna thank you for your, your work with all of that.
It's helped.
Thank you for stepping up.
You're welcome.
You did, you did what needed to be done and continued it and I think we're okay now.
Oh yeah, I think we're a lot better staff than we were.
So thanks, thanks for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
Yeah, you and Sheriff both, so, we appreciate it. Any other thoughts or comments?
Why move to approve the completion of the communications center oversight by the Scotts Bluff County Sheriff's Department effective June thirtieth, May twenty-five?
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
So I have a motion and a second to consider completion of communications center oversight by the Scotts Bluff County Sheriff's Department effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
Ken? You have five yeses.
All right, motion's carried. All right, we'll go to the next phase of our agenda, which is old business, time clock plus and payroll processes.
I do have an update for you. My update comes because Charlotte Hayek has taken over this process for us, trying to get the integration taken off from, from time clock into the MIPS system. We had paid for this, for an integration module to be put in place back in December and time clock worked on it. But then now we trying to run these reports and it was not working. And we, what they explained today is that, is that there was some sort of module fix done that broke the link. So that's what, they had to deep dive into this and Charlotte's been very persistent with, you said you were gonna call us, you said you were gonna call us. So keep them on top of it. And they are now going to do a refresh and hopefully in two weeks, we can tell you that everything, that they, that everything they had fixed is back in place. That's my update for today.
But it's been down since December?
February.
February, that's a long time.
Yeah.
Any other discussion or questions? All right, if not, we'll move on to the next segment, public comments. Board of Commissioners will receive public comments on items discussed at this meeting or suggestions for items of discussion at a future board meeting. The board will not take action on comments presented this date. Is there anyone here this evening? Come on up.
Mitch Wagers, M I T C H W A G E R S. Good evening, everybody. So the first thing is, I would like at some point a discussion about, in other words, I'm requesting something here. A discussion about what is going to happen with the visitor's center, whatever you might call it, for the museum. I have done a little bit of effort to get brochures and stuff out because it's difficult to get down here to the administrative building and get those things. So, that's a, that's a curiosity of mine, I think the, I think it has hindered the tourism of Scotts Bluff County by taking whatever actions were taken. So that's a problem that I have. The second one is, Mr. Harris, you agreed to follow up with me and I would like you to do that at some point in the near future. That was two or three meetings ago.
Okay, and what was I following up with you on? Exactly?
You said you, you wished to follow up with me after the meeting and I was here, but you didn't.
Oh, yeah, I think I do remember that.
I would appreciate that.
Okay.
I'm also very concerned about the transparency and openness, there have been several executive sessions as just items put on the agenda. I'm rather concerned that they're being put on there as executive sessions already, instead of a vote of the commissioners to go into executive session. Just a, I feel that's a lack of transparency and.
When would you say that would have happened? When would this have happened?
We did it just today, did you not?
We did one today, but you were right here. It was transparent, did you not hear it?
And there was one previously to that.
Today?
No.
We put them out there to be transparent, I would say.
Let's let Jason answer the question.
It's okay, I, I'm not supposed to get an answer, right? Just supposed to speak publicly?
Well, we can clearly talk about it next time.
I'm, I'm not, I'm asking about more transparency and openness.
Okay. Well, I'm, I think Mr. Ocean has tried to keep us on task of how he feels it needs to be done and we want to do it in as legal a way as he can direct us. That's our intention.
I understand.
Okay, so if we have some more to say about that, I guess we can do that at our next meeting. The only thing that was different for me tonight was the fact that we added that, but as every agenda talks about, we reserve the right to do that, so.
That is correct. You, I, I appreciate that, but you reserve the right to vote to go into executive session.
Right. Which we're gonna get ready to do here in just a little bit.
My, my expression is that the items in themselves are not even enough for the public to know what you're referring to. And second, I don't think it's valid to actually put it as an agenda item that there's already an executive session without a vote. That's my point.
I appreciate what you're saying. We'll ask Mr. Ocean to review that and see if we need to change our process at all. We want to be legal, but most of those executives, many executive session items are not gonna describe what subject we're talking about because of that reason. That's why we need to go in the executive session is because in this case, it's litigation and those items are. litigation, and those items are not something that I think that he wants us to expose publicly at this point. So if he does, he's the first one that several of us up here many times are saying, why can't we do this in executive session? Why can't it happen? And he's telling us, you can't go into executive session for that. You can't, you can't do this or that, and that's especially why we have him here, is we want him to keep us on the straight and narrow track of what's legal and appropriate for executive session.
Appreciate your response.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else, public comment? All right, we'll go on to the next item, which is board and staff reports. Any discussions? So we always want to give staff a chance to speak up. Let's start on this side. Ms. Kelly, you want to start?
Me? Yeah. I would love to, except for I was counting on Robert to give us a count.
A count?
Because I figured he had it. But just so the whole board hears, we've got protest hearings scheduled starting tomorrow at three. And we moved, we hadn't moved one of the eighteenth back to a no hearing needed, which has been done. And then we only had two total hearings for the eighteenth, so we've moved that other individual to the twenty seventh, I believe. So at this point, we're we've only got dates for June protest hearings, June seventeenth, tomorrow at three, and June twenty seventh, and then Robert can give you the count on. And if you could also refer to your email from Kina that you sent at the end of the day.
Right, we got a email late today from Kina, and she explains part of this as well. But yeah, so the big reminder to this is tomorrow at three o'clock, we start the real estate.
Be there, be square.
The the real estate protests hearings, and it only goes three to six. They're scheduled three to six, so that should take us into from three o'clock to about six fifteen, hopefully, if they go as scheduled.
Okay, and then I did attend clerk register deeds and election commissioner workshop last week in Kearney. Ran into Mike at one of the joint sessions with the Board of Commissioners or was it the Commissioners or the Board of Equalization whenever I saw you? It doesn't matter. I saw him.
Okay, very good. Okay, anything else?
That's all I've got.
Okay, Robert?
As Kelly stated, hearings for tomorrow are scheduled from three to six. I would encourage the board members to come in early, make sure you can sign on to your computers, make sure you can sign into Beacon. So IT will will be here, be available in case there are any issues getting signed into Beacon. So I would just encourage you to be a little bit early to make sure your systems are up and running.
Good idea.
Yep.
Very good idea.
And I've already asked John Ernie to be available starting as early as two o'clock if if anyone needs assistance, and he will do so. So this number changes, you know, hourly through the day, but my last check with the clerk's office late this afternoon, we've had a hundred and eleven protests filed so far, two of which have been withdrawn. Eighty-nine are no hearings needed. We have a total roughly right now, it changes, like I said, it may have changed since I come up here, twenty hearings that are scheduled. And I think, if I'm wrong, probably fifteen of those are scheduled for tomorrow.
You know what?
Yeah, that number?
Look what I can do. No, I just thought of it. Why don't we go to the day there's tomorrow? One, two, three, four, five, six people. One. Those, no, that's only five people, because that one is three parcels taking up two slots.
You have love levels in there twice. There's actually three in there.
There's three for two fifteen minute slots.
Right.
So that's why it's like that.
So twelve, twelve parcels, am I reading that right?
No, they're the same parcels. We just copied it down because he I thought we decided if it was more than two to give him two slots.
Right. But there are there are three that I see that are missing off of this.
I don't have those.
That I believe that were on there earlier. His name is Jerry, I can't think of Weber, Kurt Weber is his name. Kurt Weber had three protest hearings. He had them set up for tomorrow as well. We can sort that out.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I think there's roughly twelve tomorrow.
Was he even ready to have a hearing if he hasn't got done working with City of Gearing? I thought we were waiting to hear from Manny.
So we have we have a recommendation for the board. I didn't want to do a no hearing needed on it, but.
I know that it's not a no hearing needed. I didn't realize we scheduled him for tomorrow while he's still working with the City of Gearing.
Yes, because it won't be done until July twenty eighth, so Kina scheduled him for tomorrow.
Well, you guys can work on that.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. But anyway, we we've had, we have roughly twenty hearings scheduled, and we do expect a high volume the last two weeks of protests being filed. Typically, that's the higher volume period of time. So we're working with a couple of taxpayers that have multiple properties right now, so we're working through a lot of those that we're working with them pre them filing a protest. So we're doing a lot of field reviews, so that's very helpful that we're doing all that in advance. So when we come here, we've already looked at every parcel. We're not, we're doing combinations in advance, which is very beneficial where there's those opportunities, we're taking care of those. If they have recent appraisals, a purchase of a property, you know, we say that we'll generally accept those. I think that for everyone I've been has been submitted to me, I've accepted. So that that has worked really well as as well.
The busy last two weeks starts tomorrow, right?
Actually, I would have thought today, but today was actually fairly low volume. So but our first two weeks under our belt already. So I think this time last year, we had more already filed, so we've had literally a few hundred discussions with taxpayers and a lot of people. Once they have a discussion with us and we talk about how the market influences the values and how those, you know, value increases are due to those sales, many people have said, okay, I understand it, and decided not to protest. So I think that's good that we've been able to talk to the public and explain the how and the why of property assessment or evaluation assessment, and I think that's been been very beneficial to have those conversations up front to lead through a lot of them. So.
All right.
That's the status.
Appreciate it. We'll see you tomorrow. All right, Carla? Nothing? All right. Amy? Anything? Any other staff?
Sheriff back there again.
Oh, sheriff or Troy? Okay. Jason or Lisa?
I think there's Jason. Nope. No.
Lisa?
I'm working on some union negotiations with different with all three agencies, and we'll be meeting with detention center next week, started talking to comm center, and I've received some numbers from sheriff's department, so you can expect hopefully the beginning. We would really like to be able to present to you at least some of the wage negotiations at the next meeting. And I'll keep you updated what's happening there. And when I say next meeting, I mean July, right? July seventh. And I think I mentioned, or I brought forth to you on June twenty seventh, you're having a special meeting, and that we will also need to probably approve the stop loss carrier for our insurance when we finalize our decision there. We've got some a lot of considerations to discuss. So that, and it was one other thing. Oh, I'm going to start setting up some of these small budget meetings, too. Hopefully, not not this week, but hopefully next week. That'll involve some of you at different times, so we can make sure everybody's on the same page. That's my updates.
All right, I think that's all of staff, I think. Board, Russ?
The road and bridge is, they're chip sealing Highland Road right now. From, I think the bridge there, Halburn's, clear to Lake Minotera Road, what they.
Stone Gate.
Stone Gate, yeah.
I just drove that last weekend, maybe.
Wasn't it nice?
They hadn't started yet.
Oh, well, no, but I I know, but what what has been overlaid, the overlay is nice.
I'm saying, I drove it last weekend, and I was like, I need to talk to Russ and Steve.
Well, they were they were grinding and filling out there last week, getting it ready for chip seal.
They were doing a lot of grinding, starting right there at the creek by the Frank parts, Frank implement, whatever. They were they were doing the, I think, grinding, taking some of the asphalt off, and there were lots of trucks lined up there and.
Oh, they shouldn't have been grinding there. That should have been in chip seal. That was today.
Yeah.
That's chip seal. The grinding started actually where the new overlay ended up east of the airport. The grinding started up there.
So but there was a lot of activity going on there.
Yeah, they said they were really fighting traffic this morning. Everybody's trying to farm and do everything.
Yeah.
And I've had a couple of calls, you know, different, oh, just people complaining about their county roads, their dirt, gravel roads, and it's mostly cornstalks. When these guys pull these cornstalks out, and I don't know what they think we're supposed to do with those leaves, but, you know, the last call I went on, it was like I could have put everything in two bushel baskets and hauled it away, and wind would have taken care of it in five minutes, but we get those calls. And I'm still in I'm still in cap wind school. Thank you, Ken. It is what it is.
Okay, is that it?
Done, yeah.
Mike?
Well, I attended an ACO meeting down at Kearney at the same time Kelly did, and I received my level one county board certification, which requires thirty hours of continuing education within a two-year period. Then I attended the, on the sixth, I attended the dedication of the pollinator garden out front and was asked to cut the ribbon. That was a lot of fun with the kids there. And then on the twelfth, I attended the naturalization service out the monument for nineteen brand-new citizens representing eight countries, and that was kind of a fun thing to watch. That's it.
I didn't, well, I had a tourism meeting that I missed, but beyond that, I did not have meetings that were of our larger committees. I didn't have that.
Yeah, I had all mine on Thursday. I missed missed the first one. I got tied up in a doctor's office, and I did call, and there wasn't anything that would have happened. Region one are still working on that crisis mediation center at Kimball. They're going to be coming around to all the boards, all the county boards, to explain the funding, but that's going to be all about. Kimball basically donated the hospital, that's their their contribution to it, and they're working on some code for some remodel and grants and that kind of stuff. Something's been needed for a long time. Nothing much of the annual disabilities, so other, it was interesting, they they're using all their L B, all their.
ARPA?
ARPA money. They give a yearly, how do they, how do they put it? It's a retention to all the employees. They didn't seem to have any other need to.
To who?
For the employees, the panhandle.
Health district?
Yeah, no, not the health district, the.
P aging?
No.
Disabilities.
Who quit health?
Disability, yeah. Over next to the next to city hall. But that's what they were using theirs for. Evidently have other monies that they can use to do the other things that they need to have.
That it?
That was it, yeah.
Okay, Carla?
We had TCD last Thursday, nothing at work there. The legislature did change how they're going to divide out the nameplate capacity tax. Five percent off the top goes to community colleges. And then the remainder would go to all the other property taxing entities.
Okay, anything? Okay, and that includes legislation then? Okay. Okay, is there anything else before we go into our last item, which is executive session? Hearing none, so let me talk about the executive session. I'm I will move pursuant to section eighty-four dash fourteen ten of the reissue of the revised statutes known as Nebraska Public Meetings Law, that the board hold a closed session with Jason Ocean and Lisa Rhine for the purpose of discussion of pending litigation. I further move that this closed session is clearly necessary for the protection of the public interest, and that executive session for pending litigation matters is clearly authorized by the Nebraska Public Meetings Law. That's my motion. Is there a second?
I have a second.
I have a motion in a second to go into executive session as described. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have five yeses?
Okay, motions carried.
I have six forty-four.
Okay.
And I'm going to know when you're done.
Okay. You have to know. You have to know this tomorrow. I was hoping that.
Seven o'clock now.
Meeting will come back to order. We're back in regular session at seven twelve.
Roll call?
Yeah, roll call.
Harris?
Here.
Knapper? Meyer?
Here.
Reisig?
Here.
Blue?
Here.
All right, so we had an executive session item. No action was taken. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. And with nothing else on the agenda, there's no action to be taken. Call the meeting adjourned.
See you tomorrow, boys.
Yeah.